I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please the motion to go into closed meeting, be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment of promotions, performance, demotions, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific offices, appointees, or employees of any public body. Under that, we will talk about the Community Services Board, Planning District Commission, Roanoke Valley Area, MPO. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where a discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Allegheny Springs, Mid-County, Old Blacksburg Middle School. Consultation with legal counsel and briefing from staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific matters, specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. That's the polling precinct at Virginia Tech. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Six ayes?
Okay, let me go back to the certification. County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act where as section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying a closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Fitz? Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Six ayes?
The next item on our agenda is our invocation where we observe a moment of silence to reflect on the business at hand, and we will be, after that moment of silence, we will be led by Mr. Metz and the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Our next order of business is a public hearing. The following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the Berks section of the Roanoke Times on March 27th, April 3rd, and April 10th. It's a special use permit for P&amp;G Ventures Agent Meat Tractor.
Mr. Chairman, because of the conflict, I cannot get involved with this public hearing. I was on the Planning Commission step down at the dais, and I guess that would be the appropriate thing to do now at this point.
Thank you for the disclosure.
And Mr. Chair, Aaron Puckett from our Planning Department's going to run through this with us tonight, Aaron. Glad to have you in front of us tonight.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
And I might get you to turn the microphone. That's all right. There you go. We want the whole world to hear you.
Good evening. The request in front of you tonight is for a special use permit which would allow the use of an existing building currently located at 3963 South Main Street, which was previously an automobile dealership as a John Deere, Turf, and agricultural dealership. This use does fall under the definition of farm machinery sales and service and our zoning ordinance, so it does require a special use permit in a general business district. Meat Tractor is currently located in the county on Radford Road, and through this request, they would be seeking a new location with better visibility. On this map, you can see where the property is located. It's just northeast of the town Christiansburg Boundary on South Main. On the aerial photo, you can see that the property does front on both 460 Business, South Main Street, as well as the 460 bypass. The only access is from South Main Street, but the property is visible from the 460 bypass. This is the zoning map, and you can see that the property is zone general business or GB. It is surrounded by other general business properties. Some of these properties are currently being used for commercial purposes. The one exception is the property just to the north here does have a single family dwelling on it, however, that is currently vacant. In our comprehensive plan, the property is currently designated as urban expansion. This particular policy area in the comprehensive plan does encourage both residential and non-residential uses. It also does support commercial uses along existing roads, so the request in front of you tonight would be in compliance with the comp plan. Bring you go through just a couple pictures of the site, so you can see what it looks like today. This would be the view from the entrance on South Main Street looking towards the front of the building. You can see on the left-hand side of the picture that single-family dwelling I mentioned before that is currently vacant is visible from the property. This is the view from that front parking lot looking back towards South Main Street. You can see the other kinds of commercial uses that are along that corridor. This is the view from the southeastern side of the property. We're looking across the rear of the property. You can see the fenced-in area where potentially there would be storage of equipment and machinery. You can also see on the right-hand side of the photo, the visibility of the 460 bypass. Regarding impacts, the proposed use will be utilizing an existing building with currently no expansion proposed, and future expansion of that building would require a site cleanup being processed by the Planning Department. In addition, while the proposed John Deere, Turf, and agricultural dealership will sell some farm machinery, the applicant has indicated that the majority of sales will come from smaller consumer equipment such as mowers and outdoor power equipment. In regards to traffic, the applicant estimates the traffic will be lower than the previous use as an automobile dealership due to the more seasonal nature of the business. B-Dot has also confirmed with our department that the existing entrance will be adequate for the proposed use. The property is currently served by the county PSA for both sewer and water. Really no other negative impacts are expected on other infrastructure. Again, there's no current expansion of that building proposed, the current use, or excuse me, the proposed use will use the current building as is any future expansion we require approval by the Planning Department. The fence around the rear storage area of the property will help with screening. In addition, the applicant has stated that existing landscaping will be maintained, and in the rear of the property, some additional landscaping is proposed that'll help mitigate that visual impact along the bypass. This is a drawing that the applicant has provided, a sort of a concept, excuse me, concept drawing of what the property would look like. Looking from the 460 bypass to the rear of the property, you can see that fenced area where there's proposed storage of equipment and materials, as well as a display area for tractors and other equipment, and some maintain and/or additional landscaping. The signage you see in the picture that will also require approval by the Planning Department to ensure it meets county code requirements. So at the public hearing on April 9th, the Planning Commission did recommend by a vote of 8 to 0 that we approve their request with some following conditions. This first one, we've had some recent changes based on recent conversations with the applicant since the Planning Commission meeting. This is the, excuse me, the proposed change which you'll see in red. Staff have worked with the applicant to allow greater flexibility with some of the screening conditions. So the condition is now that the outdoor storage of materials and/or equipment will be limited to that fenced area. The screening of outdoor storage shall consist of privacy or chain link fencing, and the screening material shall be attached to chain link fencing to prevent any visual access. Storage containers will not be allowed to be stored or used on the property for a period longer than one week. Any exterior lighting and any signage will need to comply with the zoning ordinance. In addition to that, banners or signs will not be allowed to be mounted on any fences. The site will need to be in compliance with the concept plan that has been submitted with the applicant's materials dated February 28th. And again, any future expansion or any new construction on the site that would necessitate a building permit will also require approval of a new or revised site plan. And with that, how do you take any questions? And I believe the applicant is here as well if you have questions for them.
Questions, board members? Yes. Just have one. There was no opposition to this?
There was not. We had two phone calls prior to the Planning Commission meeting. Both were just looking to find out why they had not noticed, but once we explained it, they didn't have any comments against the proposed use. We did have one citizen come out to our Planning Commission meeting who spoke in favor of the application.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Done a fine job.
Thanks, Aaron.
Now, I guess, move on.
Well, since it's a public hearing, you can see if there's anybody in the audience.
Nobody's signed up to speak at this public hearing, but if it's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, please do so at this time. You have five minutes. Come to the podium and direct all your comments to the Board, and you have five minutes and state your name and address.
Chuck Mead, 2868 Island Road Drive, Johnson City, Tennessee. First, my name is, again, Chuck Mead, and I'm president of Meat Tractor. And I'm here, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss Meat Tractor's potential relocation within Montgomery County from Radford Road to South Main Street. A little background on Meat Tractor, we are a family-owned dealership based out of Abingdon, Virginia. Both my brother and I are graduates of Virginia Tech, and we have a great affinity for Christiansburg and Montgomery County area. We have seven dealerships throughout southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee, and we began in Christiansburg in 2012 with the purchase of SG Wimmer, which Mr. Wimmer's, son Charles Wimmer, still works with us, and the Wimmers have been in business for over 70 years and with service to Montgomery County and Christiansburg. And as we said, we are honored to be a John Deere dealer. John Deere is an American legend that recently celebrated 175 years in business, and our business model has two components. First is the traditional ag component, and second of all is the retail component with lawn mowers and trimmers, even John Deere apparel and clothing. And this new location will help to strengthen our visibility for our retail business, and it will also strengthen our agricultural business because we'll have modern facilities that increase the efficiencies in our parts and service departments, which is prime importance to farmers that need uptime of their equipment. And the current zoning requires that businesses that engage in farm machinery to receive a special use permit. So again, we do sell farm machinery, which is a critical link for our farmers, and farming is very important to not only our country, but also to this region as well. Our relocation will help to provide a tenant to a building that has been vacant for over six years. This daily traffic visibility for 460 will now have a new and thriving business rather than a vacant building, and will offer increased opportunities for the surrounding businesses we feel with increased traffic. Our facility will be neat, clean, and representative of a retail store that our customers, employees, and community will be proud of, and we request that this be approved. We have a seasonal business, and every day that we're not in a highly visible area, we're losing sales and business that we could use to invest back into the community with increased employment and increased opportunities to support the local businesses and charities that we support in the area. And with that, thanks for the opportunity, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have with myself.
Any questions for Mr. Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Thank you for being here.
Any other members in the audience who would like to speak on this public hearing? Please do so at this time. Seeing no others coming forward, I will close this public hearing. Addendum, do we have an addendum, Mr. Metz?
Believe we do. Request to add an item?
Yeah. I like to, on this meat deal, I don't know how to do it, so I'll just bring it out. Since there was no opposition to their ordinance or anything, I like to see if we couldn't go ahead. I know we're supposed to wait one to two weeks, but since the Planning Commission passed it, and it is our busiest time of the year, I'd like to go ahead if we could tonight and see if we couldn't vote this so they could go ahead and get to business.
And we do have a draft ordinance prepared that can be added to the agenda under new business, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to do that.
Okay, we will take that. Add this item.
Return.
Just to make it clear to everyone, the closed ordinance is consistent with the presentation of the plan, includes six positions that should be on the board. Is that okay with that? Motion and second. We already have a motion and second to.
Add it to the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to add it to, what, new business?
Yes.
Okay, would the clerk please call a roll?
I'll do the second.
I thought we had a second.
I'll do the second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Tuck?
I have to abstain. At the time that this came before the Board, I was representing Duncan Automotive or Duncan Ford. Those owners of that corporation also are property owners or partial owners of the properties in question. Because of that, based on advice of counsel, I have to abstain.
Mr. Gabriel?
This is simply to add this to the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to public address. If it's anyone here who wishes to address the Board about any county business or anything of that nature, you can do so at this time. You have five minutes, and please come to the podium, use the mic, and state your name and address. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public address session. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Move approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any items on the agenda? Nope. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Six ayes?
Next item would be into work session. Some of.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and the items that we're voting on and going into work session would be stormwater management and the Virginia retirement system. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Six ayes?
We're now in work session.
Mr. Chair, the first item this evening is an update on our stormwater management program. As you recall, several meetings ago, we had Mike Lawless from Draper Aiden here to brief us on where we were with that program, and tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Carolyn Howard. Carolyn is with Draper Aiden and has done a tremendous amount of work in helping us get our draft ordinance put together, and also beginning to help us walk through the steps of, or the next steps of what we're going to need to do with our stormwater management program. So Carolyn, I know you've got a presentation to share, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. Chairman, members of the board, I'm excited to finally be here. First few times I wasn't able to be here, so this is a good opportunity. Again, my name is Carolyn Howard, and I'm the Stormwater Program Manager for Draper Aiden Associates here in Blacksburg. And I know you've heard a lot about the stormwater stuff, and today's the perfect day to talk about stormwater.
Yes.
I don't know if you heard all the rain while you were in your closed session, but it was pouring.
I was trying to come into the room.
Uh huh. So, I'm here to kind of give you an overview again of what we're talking about, and go into a little more detail about your stormwater program. Okay, so your stormwater program consists of two parts. The first part is what's called the Virginia Stormwater Management Program, and what that relates to is all new construction. So as of July 1st, 2014, you will be responsible for reviewing plans and things like that. Second part of your program is what's called the MS4 permit, the Municipal Separate Stormsewer Program Permit, which we still don't have the permit yet, but that's for existing conditions and for new construction. So again, what does the VSMP mean? What does that Virginia Stormwater Management Program mean? It means that internally, the county will have to do plan reviews, construction inspections, long-term maintenance agreements, and inspections of best management practices in perpetuity after they are constructed. What is the MS4 program? And we'll get into more details in a few minutes, but it's planning for and implementing six minimum control measures as established by your permit, including any, including your local VSMP program, which is a requirement of the MS4 permit. You will also have some TMDLs, which is called Total Maximum Daily Load, at waste load allocations potentially for the Crab Creek TMDL. Okay, and that'll be coming out later this year. So who are your friends in all this MS4 stuff? Well, here I show the western side of the state, and the pink stars are the new MS4s. It's yourself, Montgomery County, the city of Radford, Radford University, the town of Abingdon, the city of Stanton, and the county of Augusta. And but, we've, town of Blacksburg's been at MS4 since its inception in 2003, same with the town of Christiansburg. So you're in a lot of good company here, and we just had a meeting earlier today, and there will be some synergies that you can share some of these requirements with the adjoining towns and Virginia Tech, who is also an MS4. So what does this MS4 really mean? What do you have to do with this? Well, basically what it is, is for any water that crosses a public land, okay, that is within the urbanized area. Now, I know Mike has shared that with you before, and this is an example right here of what we're talking about. This whole, you can't see the urbanized area line, but this is, this is in the urbanized area. This is the new Blacksburg High School, and there are primarily three drain, defined drainage channels within the county's property that come to these stars. These are the outfalls. These are the MS4 outfalls. And at this point, where my mouse go, where it crosses back into the town is where you have your MS4 outfall, and you need to do some monitoring in it in the future. You need to map all the storm sewer systems that come to those stars in the near future and determine what the total tributary area is, or how much of that area comes down to this point, down to these stars, even outside of your public lands. So the key to understanding what you're responsible for is any drainage that crosses your property, county's property, within that urbanized area. So here I have a couple of blowups of the urbanized areas and your county property shown in blue. We've also taken up the school board property and shown it in pink because since it's not technically a county property, it's not necessarily part of your MS4. So here we have two parcels. We have Elston Lafayette Elementary and the Elston Lafayette Industrial Park, which is shown as a county property. Those are public properties that will have some MS4 outfalls. Town of Christiansburg East, we have Falling Branch Elementary. It is within the town of Christiansburg, but it's owned by the county. So that stormwater is the county's responsibility. In the Christiansburg area south, you have Christiansburg Middle School, Dune Old Detention Home, and several county administration facilities, the library where we're sitting here today, and the courthouse. Again, the red is the 2010 Urban Census Area, so everything inside of that we're responsible for in these areas, of course. Plum Creek area, you've got a school out there, but it's not within that magic red line, so you don't need to worry about it right now. Christiansburg area north, the only public properties that are county are currently owned by the school board, and that's the high school site and the maintenance facility. Again, here's Bellevue and Pepper's Ferry area, and according to this, the 2010 Census, your elementary school is outside of that line, so we don't need to worry about that either. This is where it gets a little interesting here. The Prices Fork, Blacksburg area west, the Prices Fork Elementary, the new one, as well as Blacksburg High, Middle School, and Kips Elementary. So those two facilities, and then we also have the waste collection site, but that's outside your urbanized area, so it's not part of your MS4. Blacksburg area north, you don't have anything there. Blacksburg Central, so internal to the town of Blacksburg, the county owns, of course, old BMS, and the library is set. Any outfalls on there, you'll be responsible for. Blacksburg area south, you have the Montgomery County Park, which is just outside of your MS4 red line, so you don't need to worry about that either, and this is the park. So what does the MS4 program development mean? Okay, we've talked about the areas that you have to provide a program for. What do you have to do? The six minimum control measures, the first one, actually, the first two are probably the most important. It's talking about public education and outreach. You will need to develop a website that is dedicated to stormwater management, both for your VSMP program and your MS4. It's recommended that since the county is so tied in with the public school system that you develop an educational program to, for school-aged children so that they raise their awareness about stormwater management. You also have to provide three outreach events, and hopefully through a memorandum of understanding with the adjoining towns and Virginia Tech, you can combine your efforts there and get those three outreach events completed. Public enrollment participation, not precipitation, participation is your annual MS4 plan, which we're working on right now, and every year you have to post that plan and an annual report on your website, and the staff will have to come to you every year, probably about this same time, and give you an update on the status of the MS4 program. Elicit discharge detection and elimination. First of all, what the heck does elicit discharge mean? I found some cute ones here to show you. One, it's pet waste. Look at that one. Two, it's somebody washing their car. Two, it's somebody washing their car and just having the soapy, soapy water going down the drain. It's construction debris going directly into your stormwater system. And it's just simple oils and such coming off the roadways. Probably saw some of that when it first started raining today. So what do you need to do? Well, the first thing you're going to start out with, and we'll talk about scheduling in just a minute, is start mapping those storm sewer systems and MS4 outfalls for your schools, your parks, and wrecked facilities in your county administrative building, all those facilities that we went through that are within that urbanized area. You have to develop an ordinance on policies and procedures to deal with these illicit discharges, as well as a screening program. Even though you have a very small MS4 area, there are, there are lots of things that have to be accounted for here. You have to maintain your erosion sediment control program. And you have to, now you're going to have to track and report all your erosion sediment control permits that the staff deals with. They have to report that to the DDQ. Same with the VSMP program, post-construction stormwater management. And that's post-construction. You have to develop an ordinance, which we're talking about now, policies and procedures, we'll work in on those, and a tracking and reporting system. Because remember what I said in the beginning, you have to go and inspect these BMPs even on private land within that urbanized area in perpetuity. And actually, we do it for the entire county. The VSMP covers the entire county. And pollution prevention, good housekeeping for municipal operations. So any of those facilities that we talked about, in the schools, the parks, sites, you have to do something to, for municipal operations. So we are already doing the household hazards waste event. You have to develop pollution prevention plans for any of your facilities that have any outdoor potential pollutants that's disposed to stormwater. And nutrient management plans for all areas where you have greater than an acre of grassland might, within your urbanized area. Okay, so that, that'll be some of the school facilities, parks. And then you have the Crab Creek TMDL, which we talked about. We still don't know what the waste load allocation will be for the county's MS4 because it's coming out in summer of 2014. This is a great opportunity to be working collaboration with the town of Christiansburg to meet those waste load allocations. So let's kind of go back. For the stormwater program, what is this immediate schedule? The more urgent part of this is the Virginia Stormwater Management Program. We're planning to have a public meeting on May 27th, work session on June 2nd, adopt the ordinance on the 9th of June, submit it to DDQ on 15th, which happens to be the last day that we can submit it, and implement the program on July 1st, which is a requirement. For the MS4, we're going to resubmit our MS4 program plan on Wednesday, and we will wait for DDQ's approval of that permit. So it should come within the next month or two.
We did get comments back-
Yes.
-on the MS4.
Correct. And we are working to resubmit. So for the next five years, what do you have to do? Now, bear with my color coding here. Red is immediate, green is in 2015, I think I used purple or blue for 2016, and black is in perpetuity. So you have to get your website started within the next year, have a couple of years potentially to get the public school education program up and running. And you need to plan, have a plan for those three outreach events within the year. You have to have your annual report on your website in a year, and we have to stand in front of you and give you an annual update. Illicit discharge detection elimination, the funnel mapping can be done in the next 48 months. It says 2016, you have such a small area that I think we can get it done in that timeframe. Ordinance and policies, procedures have to be done within the next year. Screening program, same thing, within the next year. We're already doing erosion sediment control, we just need to provide a program update within 48, 24 months, as well as a tracking and reporting system. The VSMP, which is this post-construction, again, the ordinance, the policies and procedures must be in place by July 1st of this year because you're going live July 1st, 2014. Tracking and reporting system, which will take a little more time to get up and running, needs to be done in the next year. Pollution prevention, good housekeeping for municipal operations, you're already doing your hazards waste event, stormwater pollution prevention plans need to be completed by 2016. This is the bulk of the work is, is in this, is in illicit discharge and in the pollution prevention, as well as nutrient management plans. Crab Creek TMDL, we don't know what those implementation goals will be yet. That's still forthcoming. So what is your new director of engineering regulatory compliance going to have on their plate the first year? Actually, quite a bit. Virginia Stormwater Management Program, they're going to need to do all the plan reviews, inspections, and prepare that tracking guidelines. For the MS4, they're going to be working with your counterparts in the town and Virginia Tech to negotiate an MOU to help offset some of the costs for the educational programs. Manage stormwater website development, coordinate with Montgomery County Public Schools to develop the public education program, plan the outreach events, and this is the big one, again, the illicit discharge detection ordinance, policies and procedures, outfall mapping, and the annual reports that are required by statute. Those are all just a sample of the tasks that will be required in the next year. Questions?
Questions, board members?
I just have one. The education with the public school system, is that a state requirement?
It is not. It is not a state requirement. It's always good to start young with the kids so that they can learn. In fact, I had a conversation with my nine-year-old this morning. He's starting to understand what it is, and starts there and can move up to the parents and how, why this is simple.
So I guess I'm going to ask this question then. This education would come from, I mean, how, what is the plan to develop it and deliver it?
I think that, that still needs to be thought through, but it could be part of the science curriculum. I know there are some things with the MS4 program that's already being done as part of the science curriculum in, in the schools that can be incorporated into your MS4. So it's not necessarily that you have to create something new, but you just need to work with the other MS4 locales, town of Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and, and I think the Soho Conservation Service is doing some of that educational outreach. Work with them and-
So it would be something that you would look at the curriculum, like whatever it might be, K through 12, and see where it might fit in. It might be that it doesn't fit in every year. The reason I'm asking you this is I'm an elementary teacher at my other job, and we're constantly being asked to teach everything to everyone, and there are not enough hours in the day to teach what we have to teach right now. So I guess what I would suggest is, you know, like what you're suggesting, you look at what you already have in place, so it's not made any more complicated than it has to be, because it is very important to understanding for the environment and for the children as they go through. But I would just, I'm just throwing that out as a piece of caution.
Yeah.
Mary, I think you can also do that and speak to students.
Mm-hmm.
Just kind of talk to the students. Don't have to necessarily be class and completely make them aware.
Yeah, I've just seen over time how everything becomes a class that the classroom teacher is responsible for. So I'm just suggesting that from the very get-go, you look at what you already have in place and how you could fit in something easily. Just as a little warning, not that you have anything to do with all the other stuff that happens.
I agree.
Just, just one question, does this have anything to do with the Chesapeake Bay runoff?
No, it's not. The VSMP regulations are statewide regulations for stormwater quality, quantity of control, separate from the requirements for the Chesapeake Bay.
Of course, the reason I'm asking is that we're not even close to the headwaters of the Chesapeake Bay, and we still have to pack.
It's for, well, we have, you have your own local TMDLs. I mean, it's not just Crab Creek. Strubles, Strubles Creek has a TMDL for sediment. It's primarily the town of Blacksburg and Virginia Tech, but they'll be part, you know, as that gets worked out right now, you don't have a waste load allocation. So it's not just about the Chesapeake Bay. We have some really issues here with the local degradation of our local creeks.
Any other questions? Or comments?
Good presentation.
Usually when Carolyn presents the staff, by the time we're done, we're all kind of cross-eyed. So Carolyn, thank you for, you kept us moving really good tonight.
Well, the boys are cross-eyed too after you got through tonight.
It's amazing.
Okay, the next item is the Virginia Retirement System.
It's going to be Ms. Hill. Just want to bring you a brief update on some information that we have with VRS, just to make you aware of a issue.
These are big paychecks.
Angie, did you pick the color because of the group that's here tonight for the-
I didn't know that that was well coordinated. It just reminded me of spring, but I thought that was good.
Good coordination.
Okay, as Mr. Meadows said, we're going to talk a little bit about Virginia Retirement System rates tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about how they're determined and how well our plan at the, for the county is funded and an option that we've become aware of. The Virginia Retirement System is a defined benefit plan, and what that means is we contribute to the plan, and at the retirement date of employees, they are guaranteed a certain benefit. The risk, the way that we're able to determine how much to put into the plan is the VRS hires and actuarial consulting firms to look at various factors and assumptions and comes up with the rate that needs to be established, that the contributions need to be made at, so that the, the plan can have enough assets to fund the benefits. And the rates are established every two years. Because of the nature of these factors, they, they are going to change. They have to be looked at at a point in time, and then the rates will change over periods of time as those factors change. For fiscal year 13 and 14, the county elected to contribute at an optional lower rate. We contributed at 10.51% compared to the VRS certified rate of 13.94%. If you recall, there were lots of changes going on with VRS at that time, including they switched the 5% employee contribution that the county had been able to pay for in the past, had to be shifted to employees. So we didn't feel like it was a good idea to contribute at the higher rate. At that time, we wanted to wait and see how that all played out and the effect of that. We've gotten through that, and now the FY15 budget has been funded at the certified rate of 13.11%, which is an increase of what we're currently funding at of 10.51%. The dollars associated with that increase are approximately $420,000. Recently, just a week or so ago, we became aware that the General Assembly is providing us the option again this year to fund at the lower rate of 10.51. When we learned of this, I spoke with the CFO of the VRS several times. We had many conversations about what the impact would be at funding at the full rate versus the lower rate. And basically, if the contributions are made at lower than the certified rate, the plan is not fully funded. It's, it's considered unfunded and a liability is created. So if we continue to fund at a lower rate, that unfunded liability will get bigger.
Just keep kicking the can.
And I know we've talked in the past, and you've heard from the school board about the teacher retirement and how that plan is very, is not funded very well at all. Over the past several years, the General Assembly has not allowed that plan to be funded at certified rates. It has been funded at lower rates because the General Assembly, that way they don't have to put as much money into the plan if they funded the lower percentage rates. Right now, the teacher retirement plan is significantly underfunded at 62%. That means if you look at how many assets are in the plan compared to the liability, it's only 62% of the liability. At June 30th of 2013, the county's plan was funded at just over 72%, which is better than the statewide teacher plan. But we're concerned that if the county continued for a third year to fund at a lower rate, that could cause problems for us and cause our plan to become more unfunded.
So, so if I'm not understanding you correctly, 13.1%, 13.11% the, the budget currently funds the VRS, that, that would keep us at 72% because it's a certified rate, so-
It should keep us at that level or help us increase, because the goal of the rates is to make the Plan B is funded, be funded at 100%.
Yeah, the goal is to continue to, to close that gap so that at some point it is 100% funded.
Right.
And even though this is an option that was presented to us, we, we had some discussion about this, and then after Angie had a couple of conversations with VRS, you know, staff's recommendation is that we leave things the way they are for fiscal year 15, and we not take advantage of the, of the lower rate because all you're doing is opening up a bigger hole for the future. But that's, we want to make sure y'all are okay with that.
Okay.
I think it's pretty clear. To me, it seems like if the option was given, and all that option, the funding at a lower rate, you're just kicking the can down the road, and then it's going to be, the can's going to become a burrow.
That's exactly what KLG and several other big managers, it was getting bigger than that one.
Well, the, the key in it, something that we talked about last week, is the compounding effect. You can shave off a little, shave off a little, shave off a little, but that little bit, if it was being contributed over time, fills that hole.
Sooner or later, you got to pay the paper.
That's right.
But we wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that as well, so thank you, Angie.
Any other discussion before we go out of work session? Hit a motion. Go ahead.
Move.
Take it. Have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Chairwoman?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next item is over business, subject A, ordinance allowing the operation of golf carts and utility vehicles, Warm Hearth Drive and Litton Lane. Move approve. Have a motion approved and-
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Chairwoman?
Aye.
Six ayes.
New business, we're going to add ordinance allowing a special use permit for P&amp;G Ventures, Agent Meat Tractor, for the purpose of allowing the farm machinery sales and service in the Charlesville Magistriscal District. Has tax parcel number 067-A161, account number 006298. Has tax parcel number 067-A161, account number 006298. Need a motion? Yeah.
Have a motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Abstaining for the reasons previously stated.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Five ayes, one abstain.
Okay, and other new business would be schedule of public hearing for saw and water management.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
I guess we would table Subject B, or...
And there was one aspect of this that I think that, I'd like to bring out. At one point in time, we received an email from Virginia Tech or information that they had withdrawn in regards to squires. After receiving that email, or right around that time, I sent out an email, I wanted to name, and spoke with Leslie Wyden, who's the manager of the University Club. They're having a board meeting on May the 7th, and I asked if she would consider adding that to the board, their board meeting, to see if they would consider putting the poll in place there. I'm not certain as to whether that polling place would be sufficient for the electoral board. At the same time, I'm happy to address that, happy to try to add the University Club on, if that's something that this board would want to consider even. In speaking with Leslie, she did say that they are, in some ways, a separate entity on a handshake deal from 1929, I believe she indicated. So there is some separation between Virginia Tech and the like. At the same time, there is that close relationship, and she indicated that she would want to run it by Virginia Tech first. Now, that may not be a possibility. It may not be something their board would want to consider, or Virginia Tech may say that's still part of our campus, and we don't want a poll in place there either. But if this board wants it to be considered, I would be happy to go there on the 7th and ask them if they would consider it. Be happy for staff to go. I'd be happy for another board member to go, whatever the board would like to do.
But the, to Subject, this, this, this public hearing was specific to squires and F3 and E3.
And, and that's why, in regards to that, I didn't know if we should bring it up as an addendum, and then I think there was some discussion at one point in time that we could just bring it up during this phase. If, I understand the squires being tabled, and I guess this was, is part of the business, and so obviously, it's not a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
But I guess I'm just asking whether, is this something that our board members would consider? Or is this something that our board members say, no, that's not something that we would consider doing, or it's a waste of time? I guess I'm looking for some guidance from my fellow board members.
Comments, anyone?
I think it'd be best probably for staff to handle the search for the, the alternate polling location, because there's several possible locations. University Club might be one. I think that they, I think Tech would still consider them part of campus, but that remains to be seen. There's other possibilities immediately off of campus, on Washington Street, or up in downtown, and places like that. So I would hope that staff would investigate all those possible opportunities. Are there other maps available?
Yeah. Just to see how to put it in context, what options you have there right now. Go with, right now, we have O, the E3, and F3. What we could do is we could look for a new location, make a poll in both of those. We could look for a location for E3 and one for F3 that are separate, unlike the one where sparsely they're holding the same spot. Or we could keep E3 and, and then not go with F3 this time, and put F3 back into F1. Put that area of Tech down to Luther Memorial Church. It could be considered walking distance. I think those are the options. We're not doing any of them. So I think what we're looking for, we need staff working for some, at least consensus on the board, which way you can go. And we could bring back a change, if you want to change. At the next meeting, hopefully, we can get the okay.
The one thing about the University Club, it does meet, I think they only meet once a month for their, their board, so we would need somebody to go there and say, this is a possibility, it's that we're not committing to it, we're just wanting to know if they would be willing. So we would need to send some, staff over there.
Well, I think all you would need right now is just consensus from the board right now, because we wouldn't be...
Where you want, what kind of approach you want to stay, and we could pick someone back if we need to. I don't know if we can get polling location, if we require, or options.
May I just go down to the podium, just to highlight something?
Yes, yes, yes.
Just, if you're unfamiliar with the Tech campus, is that the benefit of this, which is modifying, which is basically, as Marty said, this particular map, which is putting the F3, it was a new precinct, it's just kind of putting all those people who used to be in F, back in F1, with some very slight modifications up here. There's a tiny bit of G1 that kind of poke down here, it actually cut right through, it was a set of tracks that cut right through the one right around here. This is the upper quad, where all the cadets live. This is really on campus. Campus kind of goes like this, and then down like here. There's really no one that lives either over here, this is where the poll plan is, there's some academic buildings right here, this is all academic buildings right in there, this is where squires is, academic buildings, academic, there's a parking lot right there, actually. And then there's, there's nobody really that lives, there's probably a few people that live in there, a few graduate students, but I think there actually are a few foreign. So, so really, the only people that are affected are right there, and their polling location would be just down the hill at the Lutheran Church, so that makes it accessible to them. And that's where vast, vast majority of them are ready to vote right now. So all you're doing is, you're taking out, with this, this precinct, is you're adding these people who had to drive all the way up, up Patrick Henry to the Blacksburg Community Center, and you're allowing them a walkable polling location there for people who live on campus. The other thing that this does, it puts almost everybody else on, who lives on campus, this new E3 district, is the idea would be to find, polling locations just off of campus, and whether that's, they're even highlighted here, the possible locations. The Lyric Theater as one, maybe the Blacksburg Ranch Library, which is A2 right now, but might be able to be moved. There's a Blacksburg Campus Ministries, which is right off of campus on Washington here, with a big auditorium in the back. University Club would be right here-ish, I think, if I'm remembering right. Yeah, right about there. Again, that's technically on campus, but because they have a separate agreement, it might, it might be a possibility. Again, all of those things would be walkable for the vast majority of students who live right in this area, right in here. So, so this seems to me a reasonable alternative to what's, the kind of situation we find ourselves in, right now.
Now, we would need consensus for staff to investigate the possibilities of establishing a polling place for E3.
Any of those locations? Yeah. I would, I would say, can I just add one thing that I forgot to mention, too? Marty kind of touched on this just a bit, is that the benefit of not adding the F3 and folding it back into F1, is that you only need one location.
Right.
And there isn't as big a space needed, because there aren't as many voters going to that, that double precinct voting location where, in the previous version, so... Be about, was it 3,800 voters? I don't remember. Would be adding three.
It's a lot. If you remember when we first started this process, about eight, with both of them, then you really could put the whole campus in one precinct, because it would create two different precincts.
Yeah.
So that's why we can't do it, we have three areas. At least you have three on campus in the E3, so you don't make E2.
Big. But I was thinking, for that polling place, is it about 3,800? Is that the number about?
Right.
No, it would be E3 now. Is that, am I thinking the right numbers? I think so.
We have population numbers.
Okay, not registered voters, okay. Because there are probably more than 30.
Remember, under state law, to get up to 5,000 registered voters, you have to...
It's tricky.
Split precinct.
Yeah, tricky. That's why I was thinking, 3,800 seems to be sticking in my mind, that that would be about what E3 was, but I may be wrong.
Four is F3. I'm looking, oh, but...
We don't, we don't, there is no F3.
The F3 was the proposed new precinct we would have been creating, but we're not, under this plan, you wouldn't have to do that.
Okay. No, just talking about F3, and I keep looking at it.
Yeah, sorry. No.
There's only two.
Only F2 currently now. Okay, Mary.
Okay, I agree with the analysis about F3, because, you know, I've, I've been a resident of District F for a long time, and have worked the polls before I ever ran for office. And, and we've always had students that walk to the Lutheran Memorial Church, it's not that far from Upper Quad to walk there and back. So I think that's fine. I think it would be great to find another place to put the E precinct. And one of the such suggestions Matt had suggested was the library downtown. I would, the only thing I would say about that is that it's been a long time A location, A precinct location that people are very used to going to, and it is further off campus than some of the other locations that were mentioned. So I don't know, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know if it's good to push out a precinct that has been longstanding for A, that's located in A, in order to put an E1 in there, if you know what I mean. If we could find something closer, I think that would be better to the campus, because it's, I mean, it's a further walk. It's not that it's that long or anything, but I would just caution that, I don't know if that would get people upset that are used to voting at the library in A.
And what other location, other than the University Club, you might look at the German Club, perhaps?
That might be. And that, that's further, it would be into that, or towards, more towards the lower quad. It's not a perfect solution, but still walking distance, I would think. It's a little bit far.
Let's be further. I mean, are you looking for something that, I guess the idea, Matt, are we looking for something that is easier for the students to walk to, right? So I guess in my thinking, you know, thinking back to the old days when I used to be there, it seems like you should have something that's a little bit closer to the edge of campus. That, I mean, you can think about the German Club, but like, you're going to be, I mean, you'd be walking up that road, then you'd have to walk up the long driveway to get there. And I've talked to, it was interesting, I talked to a couple of students, or not students anymore, but they're actually young people that work at, at our schools, and they told me they never voted in college, because it was not practical. And I said, wow, you know, because I was talking about how to make it more accessible. But so I'm, I guess I'm thinking if we could find something that was closer to the campus would be better.
You know, when I hear y'all talking about getting close to camp, I've got constituents that drive 15 miles to vote in several different directions. And I don't, my heart don't bleed for any of them, although I do think we need to get a place over there, you know, if it's a difference of 150, 200 feet, or whatever, that's make, you know, I think we need to look at the best place.
That's close by, yeah.
And go from there, but, you know, time and distance, at that point, you know, from where they're at, you know, difference between one block and two blocks, my heart don't bleed for them.
Well, the German Club would be longer than a couple blocks, I'm thinking. Maybe I'm wrong.
But I think it's, it's still a preferable location than the airport. And I think that's the point, is that, you know, the airport right now is, is a 20-minute bus ride, not counting the wait for the bus out, and then 20-minute ride back. So if you're trying to get there between classes, it's just not going to work. You could, you could, if you hustled, walk out to the German Club. I absolutely agree that, you know, someplace closer, like maybe one of these, one of these ministries that are right on the corner, one of these churches, right on the corner of campus.
You could get there easily.
Or someplace similar, or maybe even, maybe there's another place downtown we're not thinking of, then that would be, those would be ideal. But worst case, the German Club would be better still.
And, and I agree with Mary. I would hate to move somebody who's been used to voting one place at A2, and then moving them, I, I just don't think that that's, for me, that doesn't seem right, moving one set of voters who've been used to going one place to, that...
That's fine, then that's withdrawn, as a suggestion.
Other comments?
Well, I think that it's as close as we could keep it in proximity to the campus. The only thing, when I think about, like, the German Club, for an example, I don't think the bus goes down South Gate Drive, and it's a...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a pretty good distance to walk. And especially if you have to walk over and, and wait in line for 20 minutes or something like that. But if I could stay on the edge of campus and step over a little bit into one of those places that's close, I could get back to my next class in time. And if you had to go to the German Club, and you live somewhere in there near the, the drill field or somewhere like that, that's a pretty good distance. I don't care if you got a bicycle, I think it's a pretty good distance on a busy campus day. If you had planned to walk, instead of waiting for a bus to drop you off somewhere over close, they could drop you off on Washington Street, and, and I guess you'd still have a good distance to walk. But I think it would, you get that walking distance in there, and if the weather's not suitable, you know, it's rainy or whatever, that it's going to discourage people to, to go vote.
And, and there's a lot of students who, I mean, my son's on campus, he doesn't have a car. And so, you know, if somebody gets their car, drives 15 minutes to go vote, I drive about 10 minutes to go vote, but you don't have that choice if you don't have a vehicle.
Especially if you got to walk to the cage to get your car, because they require you to park that in the cage.
Yeah.
You walk to the cage, get the car, and then you drive over, then you got to put it back in the cage.
But maybe we think about the German Club area as a ballpark?
Right.
Which would be better than the airport?
Yeah, I think it would be.
Yeah, it would be closer.
So, Nick, what do you think about the, the F1 idea? Just, it's basically keeping it kind of what it is.
Yeah.
I think it's good, just from what I have experienced.
I mean, it's fixing a couple tiny little things.
Right.
Now, Mr. Attorney, now, what do we do with setting up this date? Do we table this, or?
Yeah, we have to table this, but we, we don't have a polling location.
That's right. Yeah, because I was thinking, say, you'd be appetizing something that wouldn't, wouldn't trip. So I guess, do we need a motion to table it, or, in a second?
I guess I'd move to table it.
Okay, he moved to table it?
It did.
Okay, he, he moved to table it, and is a second to table it? Okay, have a motion in a second to table this item, and all in favor? I mean, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
No.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Five ayes, one ayes.
Subject C, proclamation, 100th year anniversary of the corporate extension. Some of, have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
County attorneys' report.
Aye, no reports.
County administrators' report.
Believe it or not, no report, Mr. Chairman.
You kid. It's a first, we're not to write that down.
I went through everything twice, I really don't have any hot potatoes for you to know.
Okay, board member reports, Supervisor Biggs.
I don't have a report either, just a question. So when you table, when you table that, you know how you, we table things, we always put a time to come back? Since this, but it'll be a different form?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Pre-vice.
Okay, just, that was my question.
Pre-vice.
Thanks.
Supervisor Tuck?
No report. I think we took care of it, that my report was going to be the University Club, so amazing other suggestion in regards to Blacksburg Baptist as well, but I don't think that's necessarily suitable.
Supervisor Gabriel?
Just very briefly, looking forward to the meeting.
Just very briefly, looking forward to the meeting with Blacksburg tomorrow, 7 o'clock, Blacksburg Transit. I might be just a couple minutes late. I'm dropping my son off at his baseball game in Charlesville, so I should be there in time, but if I'm a couple minutes late, I'm on my way.
Okay.
Might get a rain delay.
Yeah, might be rained out, so it might not be a problem anyway, so.
Supervisor King?
No report.
Oh, my gosh.
Mr. Creed, Supervisor Creed.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, I guess it's down to me. Okay. What I'd like to do is, I guess, have, I guess, a resolution in support of, I'd like to appoint a committee to study the Rhona Public Safety Facility's needs. And it would be, what happened is that for probably a year or so, the Rhona Rescue Squad has been busting at the seams, and the rescue captain and the chief has been in contact with the county administrator. And I, and so in order to approach this, I'd like to propose appointing a committee to study the facility needs. And the committee would compose of the captain of the rescue squad, the chief of the Rhona Fire Department, the Montgomery County Administrator, the board of supervisors liaison to the Fire and Rescue Commission, the Montgomery County Emergency Services Coordinator, the Montgomery County General Services Director, citizen appointment of, like, Kelly Walters, and the board representative from the Rhona District. And there would be a subcommittee in that group, would be more or less like the working group. And that would be like the lieutenant from the Rhona Rescue Squad, the assistant chief from Rhona Fire Department, the Montgomery County Emergency Services Coordinator, the Montgomery County General Services Director, the county budget manager, and a citizen appointee. And they would basically study the needs and make recommendations to the facilities committee, which would also make recommendations to this board. I don't expect anything that would happen immediately. I expect them to set up the meeting dates and to make some kind of, do some studying, and some conversations between themselves, and maybe some of the people out there, and some of the fire and rescue members, and look at the needs. And this would probably be a plan that probably wouldn't be implemented for, if they say, for an example, we can move the rescue squad into fire department and build a new fire department. And look at, along with that, you could probably move the collection site, which is right up against the school out there. So I'd like to have some support, and maybe a resolution supporting the appointing of this committee and the subcommittee working group. And I'd take some comments if you, yeah.
Sorry, can you clarify? First of all, I'd like to see, you know, the text of any such resolution. And second of all, I'm not opposed in principle, but I would want to know specifically what the authority would be vested in this committee, and what its charge specifically would be. There's also the issue, is that my understanding, right, is that the chair of the board of supervisors and the liaison to the Fire and Safety Commission are the same person? That's you, Mr. Brown, right? So would you be serving, would you have two votes on the committee? Or would you be, would there be a vote, would it be a voting committee? I don't know what the facilities committee is that this group would make its recommendation to. Is that on the fire and rescue squad? Or is that within the administration somehow? So I mean, I would just need a little bit more clarification about what specifically this committee would be doing, and how empowered it would be to do the things.
Well, the committee officially wouldn't have any, would you say, power? It would be a committee that would make
Advisory.
More advisory or recommendations to this board. I mean, it would come up, the working group, you'd have a working group who would make presentations to the facilities committee.
What's the facilities committee?
The facilities committee would consist of the rescue captain, the fire chief, the county administrator, the liaison, the emergency services coordinator, the county
Oh, I'm sorry. So you're suggesting that this working group would make recommendations to the committee?
Right, they would be the ones
And then the committee would make recommendations to the board?
Yes, and, yeah. Of how to address those needs.
I'm curious why there's the layers there. I mean, why aren't we just, if you want to do this, like, why aren't we appointing a committee to make recommendations to the board?
Like, you mean one committee instead of two?
Yeah, I don't understand.
Well, we need a working committee, because I don't think that the working committee want to take on another bunch of, I don't want to take on another bunch of meetings, and meeting with this and that. So you have the lieutenant from Rescue Squad, assistant chief, the county emergency services coordinator, general services, and so forth. Those are the people that they might want to meet two, three times a month. But we'd set that, let them set that up for their own convenience.
Make their recommendation directly to our board.
Well, if they made it to the, the facilities, the big committee, we might be able to say, "Hey, that's not gonna work. So why make it to the board?" And we can't support it and recommend it to the board.
I think the thought was a working group with some of the guys that are in, as I call it, in the trenches
That's right.
Of the fire and the rescue folks. They know the operational needs better than I would, or even Neil or some of those folks. And so the thought was, let those guys flush out some ideas. Because I don't presume, and a couple of the other folks, I don't presume to know the issues right now. All I hear quite often is, "We're out of space." Well, define space. What do you need? What are the issues? Let the working group come up with the ideas. Then that facilities committee would come back and say, you know, "All right, well, you've come up with these two ideas, but that's $10 million. That's never gonna fly us." Let the working group kind of crunch the ideas, bring that to the facilities committee to vet out. And then, once there's something that the facilities committee feels the board needs to begin discussion to talk about funding, that was the thought process.
So when would this committee be? How long would it be charged until the, would it break up immediately after it made its recommendations to the board?
It wouldn't be, I don't see it as standing, have been a standing committee with the county that would be indefinite. I think once it was given its charge, and the, this board was satisfied with whatever the results had came up, then the committee could be disbanded.
Would that require separate action? Or could that be written into the original resolution? I'm just, my concern, right, is just empowering the committee that might have more power than we would be comfortable necessarily giving it. Or that could become a standing committee that would feel empowered to make other recommendations to the board in some other form, or that might exist even if it doesn't meet.
I understand what you're saying, but probably in the resolution appointing, that their task could be specific. And once the task was completed, the committee would be dissolved.
You just want to see written out what the
Yeah, I just want to see something in writing. You know, the way we're talking about it's fine, but until I see it in writing, I wouldn't.
Okay, can we come back, or can we come back to the board with a resolution establishing this committee? And everybody can view it and say yea or nay.
I think that'd be, that'd be fine.
I have a question, too.
Yes, sir.
Shouldn't there be at least some presence of John Q. Buffett that's not
Well, we're looking at, on the working committee, a citizen appointee from out in that area.
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
I think I have an appointee. I remember him saying, was it Kelly?
Well, Kelly would be on the, the, the big part. But when I went down the numbers, I mean, a lieutenant from Rhona Rescue Squad, assistant chief from Rhona Fire Department, Neil, the emergency services coordinator, Steve Phillips, the general services director, Mark McGruder, the budget manager, and a citizen appointee.